Ron.
Great. Nine o'clock on Friday, June first. This is the customer of order select one work session. Come on down Jim.
Good morning again.
Yes, good morning.
June first. It was not a month ago we had snow and ice, didn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yep.
And the loser on the side of the window, they came last Thursday.
Seems like a lot of these this year, actually I've noticed a lot of them around.
Yep.
On the back strong.
Neat. Always an even. So we have a number of issues that we wanna review. I guess where I would like to start, the three most biggest pieces for us is road paving this year. We got Durgen Road done. You had, I don't know if you get the final billing in on that already, but I see we spent a hundred and thirty out of that line. I think that's what it is.
Uh, I thought it was one, was it one point one?
Road preparation and paving, we spent a hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. So that, that probably includes time that your guys money spent.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And we still, I haven't got the bill yet as far as the gravel goes, but I did give you an idea of what it was gonna cost. And that was gonna be around ten thousand five hundred.
I agree, that was a compliment, especially on the hills.
Yeah, we're doing a nice job.
So works, so.
No question about it, they do a great job.
So, uh, we have in that line this year, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And ten thousand of that, we had put in there to do these, the surveys and studies. So that takes us to two fifty. It may not take all of that ten thousand to get the study work done, but that's where we're at at this point. And fifty thousand of that is road improvement.
Yep.
So that not only leaves us with two hundred thousand to do the actual.
Seventy after we've paid our bills so far. So we've spent a hundred and twenty.
Well, I'm talking about the total. Yeah, so that, that leaves a total of two hundred for paving this year. And out of that, some of the hundred and thirty that we've spent already, I think is road improvement work rather than just the paving.
Correct.
So anyway, you got, and, and we know, there's another ten on Durgen Road. So we've got neighborhood of seventy, something like that left in paving. Seventy, eighty thousand in paving money, if you will.
Yep.
So we need to figure out what we're gonna, what we're gonna pay this year. We talked about Brown Road. There'd been some conversation also about a portion of North Line Road down at this end, right? And some discussion about doing Federal Corner Road. We drove all of those on our ride around and I've driven over them myself as well from time to time. They all need attention. And so which one do we do this year?
That's what we're here to figure out today.
Right. I guess from my eyes, I don't see anything that suggests anything's worse than that section of Brown Road. Which was the initial thought in terms of what we were gonna do for the other paving piece, but that's, that's my opinion. I mean, you could make a case for lots of places. And one of the things that, that I'm hopeful is once we get this pavement study done this year, it will give us a more objective tool to work with in terms of going forward and answering questions like how much do we need to budget on an annual basis to do paving work in order to bring the deficient sections up and get us on, on a reasonable schedule for maintenance and renewal on these roads.
The one thing I will mention to you, when last time I talked to Frank Carroll, which I believe was Friday a week ago, he did mention too that if you would like to meet with him and discuss anything as far as his opinions and stuff like that, he's willing to come in and meet with you as well. So it's always an option.
I guess I'm hopeful that we can make our decision here today and.
Yep, but going forward too. He said always in the future, he would be always willing to come in at any point in time.
So you had some estimates on what it would cost to do the various things that we looked at?
I have the estimate for Brown Road and for that section that we talked about, which was thirty four hundred feet. A brown road would be eighty four thousand.
Okay.
That's, the prices he, he gave you previously was fourteen thousand, three hundred and ten dollars for thirty four hundred feet.
For reclaiming, correct.
Yeah, reclaiming and sixty thousand, two hundred for base pavement, two inch.
So what's that come up to? Oh really, I had seventy thousand here in my notes. I shouldn't say my notes, but the actual estimate. Oh yeah, this is a copy of what I have. Yeah, it does say seventy thousand for the base pavement.
Someone wrote in sixty?
Uh, I think I was adding the two together for Durgen.
Okay.
Can't read.
So, so if, if we do the Brown Road piece, then we're beyond what we have in, in the paving article for this year. Unless, unless we squeeze out of the.
I, I actually did, I came up with two hundred and fifteen thousand. This was actually based from last year, that we would be spending on paving. So I guess I was expecting that.
Can I ask Diane if she can do a quick figure of how much is left in that warrant article?
It's right here on.
Yeah.
She just ran the report course.
Hundred twenty nine thousand.
What page?
It's on the back page. So, yeah, under improvements of the buildings. So I got a hundred twenty nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty one dollars, eighty five cents left in here. And ten grand, ten five of that is gravel on Durgen Road, right?
Yes, and I don't know how much we've already paid L R C Lakes Region. Did we pay them a deposit already?
Uh, we did, that's right.
And we owe them more.
Would you ask Diane to run a quick detail on the road prep and paving account? So we need, good point. We did pay some money, and I think we paid half on that, which would be like, I don't know, four thousand dollars, this or that. But when we're talking nickels, which is what we're at, we need to, need to be dealing with good numbers, for sure.
What was the Federal Corner number? Do we have that?
I'm not sure that I have that.
I don't see it, am I meant to?
Federal Corner Road first section, it's right here.
Okay, yes, you, you did a calculation, correct?
Ninety three thousand.
Ninety three thousand?
Uh, ninety three thousand, yep.
And then we have, what's the third road?
Brown Road.
No, no, uh, North Line.
North Line.
North Line.
Yeah, it was just a small section, I believe, that we talked about. And I do have a price for that, which was.
And how much, North Line?
Oh, that was, that was for the whole road, that was for the, the whole length of the road.
The whole length of North Line?
Yes, base, is that grinding it up? Cause I have one fourteen, eight hundred and fifty seven thousand, seven fifty.
One fifty seven, seven fifty.
Uh, North Line Road, I have right here, those are his figures.
And he's come from Frank Carroll.
I also got the prices for using his figures for just overlays of these different roads. But I'm hesitant to just band-aid it.
We've seen what it does on, on one oh nine.
Well, the other, the other thing is.
One seventy one.
The other thing is you experimented a little bit on Ledge Hill Road and it bought us some time, but, you know. And we didn't know any of it, cause it was the better section.
And so I think this, you know, the, the bottom number was a top coat of fifty seven thousand, so we would just be adding the twenty three thousand and about one fourteen. So we're still, you know, pretty high on that number at thirty.
North Line Road is one thirty something?
One thirty eight, five sixty.
That's to grind it up.
That's without the finished coat.
Correct.
That's not put a base coat.
Yep.
But that's the entire length. Maybe, maybe doesn't all have to get done in one year, seeing what we have left.
You know, I'd like to address that if I could. I think the C I P, the Budget Committee, certainly the Select One who've added to your budget, even the town meeting, people would like to see these projects done completely. And I think there's economy of scale. But there was in Durgen Road, even with a mishap, I know they were able to get it done in a day and a half, grinding it up, subcoat, and then by all my top coat. And it, it, it's less interference with the people. So, you know, it seems to be that there's public support out there for, you know, as Larry the Cable Guy would say, get it done. And I think that supports, supports you.
That one is complete. I almost wondered if that were between two years, oh yeah, January, it might have.
Yeah, so we got forty five hundred dollars out there was, is toward the Lakes Region planning project. And, so the actual, the actual paving that he did up there was another twenty thousand change.
What was the total bill for?
We've had that one for a while, it is done. Then this one is not done.
Uh, I would say it's, it's twice that. We, we put ten thousand in as our estimate, we know it's gonna have to lessen that, so it's.
So we've got another.
So it's, let's say it's nine thousand dollars.
So if we have another five grand coming out of that, we don't exist anymore.
Right.
Nobody's seen this done.
Minus ten five for the gravel.
Yep.
That's not paid.
I think this is the second payment, cause see the date.
So you have a hundred and ten thousand dollars on this one. By the time we paid for gravel. Studies.
It's not a big deal.
Hundred thirteen, yeah, yep.
All right, now if we look at the regular budget, how much of the catch basins culverts and apron paving and cranks, they want to be coalesced up? Or you're just gonna leave this one? You got six grand in catch basins and culverts, are you gonna?
That's the cleaning, that's the, the culverts, uh, the catch basins actually, but that's cleaning.
The cleaning?
Yep. Some of that is cleaning and also we keep culverts on to repurchase as well, to keep some on hand. We're getting a lot of them.
And the apron paving, that's five grand?
If I can ask before we start jumping around into these other things.
I'm trying to get a total number, cause we're not close to getting Brown Road done or North Line Road or Federal Corner Road done, which we've got just a number in the warrant article. So we gotta find some money somewhere.
Well, here's, here's my thought, or suggestion. Let's work with what we have in the warrant article for paving. We do have other paving money that's in the special fund and that we can dip into. And rather than trying to pull money out of the regular budget where we're already behind the power curve, cause that's another piece we gotta figure out is how do we make it through the end of December out of the regular budget, leaving enough money in there to deal with storms in December, because we got hammered in the winter time. So I kinda like to get through the, get, get a, a road map out, if you will, for what we're gonna pave, other improvement stuff you're gonna do, such as replacing failed culverts in roads. And as I, as I look at the L R P C, the map they did doesn't match the numbers, doesn't match the detail, so that's, that's sort of another subject. But anyway, I guess that's my thought process is let's settle on what we're gonna pave. Then we'll go on to the next pieces. And then the big elephant in the room is how do we deal with between now and the end of year? Getting all the stuff we really need to get done in the, in the road maintenance done. Without, without money, and it's probably gonna have to say we're gonna cut, some of the things in the regular road budget just aren't gonna get done because we don't have the money for it.
So what, what was your thought about the money that we got from the state or from the feds or whatever it was that's sitting there waiting?
I think you got, I think that we, no, well, my thought is if we need to use some of that to do road paving we're doing this year, that's great. We have some, some Peter and Warf projects that are in the offing that, that might be appropriate for as well. And as I think I stated in town meeting when somebody said, well, let's just double what we're doing in terms of paving this year, is the problem with, in my mind, with saying, we're just gonna spend, we're gonna pave twice as much road this year, is so does that become the new norm? And we're just gonna keep doing twice as much every year? And pretty soon, you know, then we're not, then we're gonna be to a point where we're, we're beyond caught up? Or do we take a planned approach and say, we're gonna spend more and we're gonna get the road study done? And that might suggest that we need to spend half again as much every year in order to bring them up and keep them up to a sustainable level? But rather than we'll bump up here and then two or three years from now, now we really don't have to spend much. It just, you know, whipsaws the taxes and, and it, in some measures tends to strain resources as well. So that, I guess that, that's my thought process is we do have that money sitting there. And I, I think it's, it's there to be used on, on road projects. But I, I'd rather not see us just fritter it away and say, well, we need a couple grand, we'll just take it out of here, or.
Do we have a timeframe that we have to spend that in?
No.
There isn't.
My understanding is it's, it is, it's in a separate account and then it doesn't sunset. But that we have to track it closely because the state is gonna be asking us to demonstrate how we're using it.
So do you wanna just select Brown, um, Brown Road's the only one close to not completely depleting that.
Right.
That to give a fund. So, I mean, I don't know that we have a, and it doesn't, I mean, the way Durgen was done, seems the way, way we should do it is to just get them all, get it done, uh.
Yep.
It was half done and then.
But when we do Brown this year, that's almost phase one, right? This, well, this section of Brown is reclaimed and base coat for the eighty four thousand, right? Which presumes a top coat in the subject one here.
Yes.
Yep.
And it is the worst half of the road.
Yes.
Other half is not as, you know, not the same.
Not pristine, right.
Not pristine, but not as bad.
No.
So we've got one poor culvert on that particular section. According to the survey.
According to the, to the, the map.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that would be a good place to probably put an underground, like we've talked about before on that hill. Put some catch basins in. That might be a good place to do that as well.
Okay, is, your thoughts on the, on that approach to the paving?
I ain't much to a different drummer. I like the way the town and Jim Bean identified the roads that are the busiest, that have the most traffic, where the most accidents can happen. We've done prior Sodom Road, Ledge Hill Road, Durgen Road, three of the busiest roads in town. If you take the three roads we're talking about, Federal Corner Road, Brown Road and North Line Road, it is an absolute no-brainer of which is the busiest road, the most trucks, the most buses, the most people, the most cars. And we went the, the length of North Line Road, excuse me, Federal Corner Road. And isn't it amazing that in Canyon Valley, we made it two lane traffic, no, to the end, even though it was a camp, and yet it's a mud ball at the end of a Federal Corner Road? I honestly believe Federal Corner Road needs attention first, even if it's a, a smaller section of it. Thank you.
There's good logic behind that too. It is obviously well-traveled.
Well.
See, I see them all as one, I mean, Brown, Federal Corner is a transit of traffic.
Right. They're, yes, they're all interrelated, I agree with you there.
The section of Federal Corner Road that is narrow and needs to be widened out, I think is the dirt part we're talking about, that, at the top end, right?
Yeah, the top end.
And.
It's an interesting dilemma.
Well, right. And, and, and when we did our ride around, we also went on several other dirt roads that need, that, I got a good feel as we rode around for some of the areas that there were issues for your guys that are clear in snow and, and keeping the roads passively. And, you know, seemed among the worst was Curtis Road. Took us up through there where it was about maybe a lane wide and yet, no, it's not a long road. Not saying that it needs the most attention. But the dirt part of Federal Corner Road, we're talking a different, I mean, this, that in my mind is road improvement, it's not paving because it has, it's not paved and I don't think we're considering paving it at this point, are we?
We've never discussed it, so.
So. And. Traffic on the dirt part of Federal Corner Road, would you say it's highly seasonal or, I mean, I know when the camps open, there's a lot of traffic up there.
There seems to be traffic in the winter time, on certain occasions as well. I'm not sure if they have, if they're open in the winter at all, if they have certain weeks that they might be up there. But I have some weeks up there where you go to turn around at the top and there's a bunch of cars in the park and all. It does happen a little bit in the winter times as well.
Using a conference center or some such there? So, any idea of dollars we're talking about on the improvement of the dirt section of Federal Corner Road?
Off the top of my head.
You also have four culverts that are in dire need of repair on Federal Corner Road.
Yep. This color-coded map shows that there's one that's in poor condition, which it looks like is just before you get to Brown Road. But again, as I said, the, the color coding on these didn't necessarily seem to match the list of the worst candidates, so.
I don't know, I guess maybe the approach, if we were to look at dirt roads, is not to put it into the, I mean, my feeling would be not to put it into the paving budgets, but just create another line and say, okay, this is what we're gonna do in two thousand nineteen for this many miles, whether it's county road or Federal Corner Road or.
And I do know in the past that, that some of that fifty grand that we typically have as road improvement money did go to dirt roads. For instance, Phineas Graves, a portion of that money for just a couple of years, went into work that went on up there.
Right, right.
Getting the ditching and, and that sort of thing.
I do have an idea of how to save the town money.
Well, we're not interested in saving money. Yeah.
Well, on the dirt road that we maintain going out to Camp Northwoods, which really doesn't service anybody but the camp.
Right.
We could donate that road to them. And that would kinda probably save us anywhere from seven to ten thousand dollars a year for maintaining it.
I think we'd have to have a town vote before we continue.
Well, yeah, yeah, but it's a.
Jeff Carson and I have actually talked about that for a while.
Yep.
We're wondering why we're still maintaining it.
Yep.
Yeah, the absence of payment will tax it.
Yep.
There's one road that's valuable for the town because guess who uses the dog for the boat?
Oh, you guys use that?
Fire department uses it, I don't know, say on a weekly basis. But you pick someone up having a heart attack on that island right there, do you go all the way back to Pier Nineteen? What do you come across, put them in the ambulance?
Yeah, I didn't realize you guys use that. Okay.
The other thing is, I've done a research as far as the camps. For example, a camp might have six hundred and fifty campers a year. But what about the trucks that go in and the buses that go in to the different camps? What about when you take your daughter there and the grandfather and the grandmother go with you? You know, there's more people in and out of these, these roads that we think of seasonal. And guess what? They bump into telephone poles. They had accidents, if there's a fire, the fire truck still has to get there. People who work still have to get there.
Well, I'm assuming they would start a camp.
Right, what?
But you can't, you can't mandate that.
Right.
I mean, what you, what you privatize. I mean, once you, once you privatize the road, the road becomes the province of that owner.
Yes.
If that owner decides they want to have grass down the middle of it and, and, you know, limited traffic or limited, or they don't want to spend any money.
I'll give you an example of that.
That, that road is primarily for the benefit of that camp, right? There aren't any private properties off the site. So, your point's well taken, with me at least, that it's, it's something to look at. And, but as you said. The governing body can't do that. It's, a town meeting is, if we're going to abandon, it's class six of road, and that has to come by vote at a town meeting.
I'll give you another side of the argument. You know where Wildwood is? And you have nine hundred feet of, of road that's in Wildwood, isn't it?
Yep.
Up on Danmore Pond, how do you get there?
You get it all the way in.
And you realize that years ago, in its wisdom, the town of Oscepe sold the legal right of way to Wildwood in Tuftonboro. How do we get a fire truck there? How does the police cruiser get there? How do you get there? You have to go to the gate in Terrace Mines. There's eleven houses up there that pay taxes.
Well, we could put a budget together to go to the central.
Well, to, uh, we, yes, right, which would also require a vote at town meeting to take it back from class six to class five.
And there are issues there, including the loss that is probably.
There are always issues, yeah.
What is your recommendation for spending the rest of your time there?
At this point, I guess. I think it probably makes sense just to continue with what we talked about, paving Brown and, and maybe we can move up next year's. You know, to schedule paving, those corners for next year and maybe get a larger chunk done.
As long as, as long as you're within the warrant article budget, let's make it happen.
Well, he isn't. And we have to pull some money out of someplace else.
Right.
Oh, I, I don't know, right? Because we need eighty-four thousand to pave that road. And then we've got to do culverts and.
Right.
Right.
So I, I don't know for sure that we're not going to make it.
Do you have the resources to get back to us within a week? Diane tells you how much money after we pay all the bills and potential bills is left. This is what I can do for one hundred, nineteen thousand and twenty-three cents. Can you get back to us and tell us what you can do for that amount of money?
I think so.
Can we go through the Brown Road number just one more time for me? I have a.
Oh, okay. Brown Road to reclaim it and put a base coat down, I have eighty-four thousand, three hundred and ten.
Okay. And the final code?
I don't have a price on that one. And. But we generally wait a year after it's.
In addition to the, the four grand that we're doing, the five grand that we're doing on Lakes Region, what, what was the other money that's coming out of this?
Well, the other money is the fifty thousand road improvement that's part of this.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, and. That has typically been, that has, that has typically been used to. To fund work that your guys do, getting the road ready to pave, digging rocks out, right? Preparing the base. You mentioned putting catch basins in, doing some under drainage on.
On the corner there.
On that section, because obviously the time to do the drainage improvements is before you pave, after you pave.
So we need a number on that part of it.
So, so we do.
We got twenty-five thousand dollars left in the budget. So, Boyd's right, just give us a number on that part of it.
Yeah, so that would leave us about thirty thousand dollars to get the rest of it done.
No, leaves you twenty-five because we owe five thousand more to Lakes Region.
I thought you said after we paid Lakes Region and the gravel, we have a hundred and fourteen thousand.
We started a hundred and fourteen five is what, what we have left. Take eighty-four three out, let's call it eighty-four five, we make it easy for Chip. That leaves you thirty grand, but now you got another five that's coming out for Lakes Region, so you end it down to twenty-five, right?
Well, we were at one thirty, roughly.
We've spent, uh, yeah, we've spent, right, we, we have left just shy of a hundred and thirty, a hundred and twenty-nine, seven.
Yeah, take the five out twice.
So.
Yep.
So you take out five, that's a hundred and twenty-four, seven. Then you got your ten thousand, five hundred, that's got to come out for the gravel, right? So that's, takes you to a hundred and.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Five.
Two, something like that.
Oh, yeah.
Right. So, call a hundred and fourteen, three, and, and you got eighty-four, three, so that's thirty grand left.
I took five out twice.
Yeah, yeah, anyway.
Mea culpa. I look at it from the other side exactly like they do. To do X number of feet of Brown Road, let's say for example, there's a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars left after all the current bills are paid in that warrant article and all the expected bills that were contractually obligated for. To grind blank number of feet to use up that money, put a base coat down. Are there any culverts in that section that has to be done? There's a price, and what will it cost to, to them to come in and do the shoulders?
We're going to have the shoulders too.
And that will take care of that warrant article for the year, correct?
Yeah.
Right, rather than, I mean, he's going to be there doing the prep. Let's get this part of it done right. If it, if it's going to cost fifty thousand dollars to do it right, then let's grab twenty grand out of our other money. And let's not, not do.
Sure, let, let's not, not do the drainage, let's not, not do the road prep.
Right.
So, so at the end of the year, you've got properly functioning drainage system and you've reclaimed and you've got a new base coat on that section of the road. It's all done, all we have to do is come back next year and top coat it. And gravel's done on the shoulders so people aren't breaking them off as they're driving off the road.
Yeah, that's.
And, and if we're going to go beyond what's left in here, then we will pull some money out of the, uh, the special fund.
Yeah, it's not a hundred, fifty, but it, it's a project, if you get that part of the project done absolutely right, then we're not going to back it for, for a long time. So we will top coat it next year. Maybe we should make a, you know, if we could make a policy of doing that as we go, I think. Spending money on the unders, you know, the superstructure is, is money well spent and.
Yes, sir. A perfect example is Sodom Road, Durgen Road, and Ledge Hill Road, where you've done that.
And then.
And you, and you more, it is paid dividends.
Yeah.
Right.
I had mentioned before, and I'll mention it again, with respect to the culverts. The, the. The culverts that are rated poor and you've seen this, you, you can have that if you like.
Is that yours, Lloyd?
No.
Okay, perfect.
There's twenty-two there, I feel like.
That, the color coding on there doesn't match the list. When I did a sort on their database, the, and I think you have that, and I. I know I brought my copy with me. Those. Those are the ones that they rated as, as poor. That's right out of that spreadsheet.
Yeah.
In my view, it's important that we start, that we're, that we get on a, a program to knock those out and, and, and replace the worst of them. I don't know, you know, whether we do a quarter of them this year or, you know. But to have some sort of plan of attack to getting them done. Obviously, the ones related to the paving projects. For sure, we're going to get done. Other ones, you mentioned to me that, on a couple of the ones that they rated as poor. That, from your view of them, they seem to be functioning okay. So. Poor can mean a number of different things and there are attributes they have in there. You know, I mean, if the, if the culvert is, is actually rotted out and, and won't pass water through it because it's collapsed, that's, that's certainly bad news. If it's structurally seems okay, but it's. Half full of sediment. The opportunity to clean them out might be there. Anyway, I guess what I'm looking for is how do we take the information we got from that study last year and apply it to solving the problem, which is replacing those culverts that need to be replaced. But I can't do them all in here, but we need to get our.
But they're probably going to happen in a logical sequence, sort of like the Brown Road, the one that's in red. That's.
This is what before you.
So, as we go through the paving process and the road building process, I think we're going to have to come to most of them. Or we could, if we had a schedule, we'd know when.
Right, right. And if you look at the color coding on there, I think there are some that they've indicated in roads that have been recently repaved, that they're suggesting are in poor condition.
Could be just sanding them too.
So, you know, before we rip it, rip the road up and rip it out and replace it, you know. If, if it's just accumulated stuff in it and that's contributed to the poor rating, then.
So we can go around and survey.
Right.
Correct me if I'm wrong. The reason there's sand in the culverts is there's no way to mitigate the energy of the water in the silt because there's no catch basin at the end of the culvert, is there?
Yep, I mean.
A catch basin goes for twelve hundred dollars plus you have to install it. It costs fifty dollars a year to clean it, and we have fifty of them, correct? We have some that we share with, with the state, there's some at the church, for example, that believe in, you know, go across our property. This is my opinion, and you and I've had this conversation. With snow removal, we just have to keep moving the snow and go back and it melts and treat the ice and then wing it a week later and all that. We do the same with culverts and ditches, we treat them like snowstorms. Whereas you go up on Pork Hill Road, you go to Merrill, Merrill Lake Fire Station, guess what? They put a catch basin in it, clean it out once a year. That's the end of it. What am I missing, Jim?
They still require other maintenance, the ditch lines will still require maintenance.
Yes.
But what you're saying is true.
Yeah, the ditch lines, ditch lines, for example, several places in town. If we put a series of catch basins in, we no longer have to clean the ditches, do we?
We still do, believe it or not. I mean, you see that the state still.
Well. And, and part of, I mean, part of cleaning the ditch lines out is because you get broken vegetation in there that you, that you got to dig out of the bottom or it's, it just builds in.
That's one of the reasons why the state actually went to straight salt and not using sand was that they wouldn't have to clean the ditch lines and, and everything, you know, the catch basins out. But you still see them out there, you know. Debris still gets in them. It just comes down through the woods and whatnot, leaves, everything, it builds up.
But for example, on Pork Hill, there are no ditches.
Oh, the bicycles, I see what you're saying, okay.
There's no places for the bicycles to, to, to go down in the ditch.
Yeah.
The road is wider.
That, that is nice.
It's easier plumbing snow.
Yep.
Because you're not getting, and guess what? Now that you shed the water through a culvert system and a catch basin system, within five years, the road base no longer is heaving, is it? Because there's no water in there.
Lot of benefits.
Now, to me, it's the equivalent of, in his development, where are the utility lines?
Very.
And it costs more to begin with, right? But guess what? There's no trees taking wires down on his road, is there?
No, but unfortunately it keeps falling on the rest of the lower streets.
Yes, yes, but, and there's a trade-off there.
Yeah. No, you're right, I mean.
Speaking of culverts, do you have money in the budget to do zaddy drive farms? A truck almost went out of sight the other day, cut the corner.
We will, we're going to put a culvert extension on there and we'll gravel it. I talked to Frank about it, he's like, that was engineered, he was wondering why we need to be extended, but.
Well, you put combs out there.
Yeah.
And what that will do is take care of Durgen Road.
Yep, we can put a culvert extension on that and gravel it, we'll build a head wall, gravel up it. I don't know that we need to extend the pavement, it, it seems unnecessary. We can gravel it, if a truck goes off, it's just ingravel. So that's what Frank and I came up with, we just gravel it.
Uh, you know that one of his trucks almost tipped over.
I heard about it, he told it, he called me.
That's the third vehicle to go out of sight at that, uh, Renegade Culvert driveway. You know that.
Poorly named road.
That was the, on the new house being built, correct?
Yes, it's the third piece of equipment that, and one sat there for a month.
I know the flag people in Tuftonboro were excellent, but boy, the minute you get over the Oscepe line, it was total chaos.
Yes.
I remember getting waved by twice and coming into a, a line of traffic coming the other way right at me, so. Maybe Mr. Carroll should have some training sessions for his flag people.
On, on Durgen Road.
Just so you know.
I know you like to do all the lines at the same time, but, um, that's a racetrack. Is there any way of working with Oscepe and getting the lines on that road? Or is it just too expensive to do it that way?
Yeah, no, if, if Oscepe is going to do them, I would love to tie in at the same time.
And I have no, I have no inside information, but.
I will call, I will call, because we use the same stripers as Oscepe, so.
And, and I'm, and I'm balancing, uh, it's a racetrack.
Yeah, so I do have the numbers as far as the striping. Did we, did we actually put more money in to do pedal corners like we talked about?
We have eight thousand dollars in road strip.
Okay, so that's, that's just the normal budget.
Right, remember I added some roads?
Yeah.
Like High Street and.
Yep.
And.
Did that not get voted through?
I can't remember what we decided.
I thought it was going to town, but that's what I remember.
We, we have eight thousand, I don't remember what we had last year, so.
Yeah, well, I, I think close to that, it was like seventy-seven hundred or something like that. Uh, but I got an estimate and that's why I think we moved up.
I travel throughout other communities and I see, following yearly what we've done on our road service, and I think that the striping and the fog lines are important.
I agree.
And I will think of two areas where the fog lines have saved you money. Number one is as you come up from Center Tuftonboro store and turn onto Ledge Hill Road, that fog line makes the traffic track wider. When was the last time you had to go down and repair, repair that corner?
Yeah, that's our.
The next one, the next one is Dame Road, Ham Hill. Remember you having, the first part you were, guess what? I don't think you've put a piece of tile down there in the last three years. As I travel throughout the county, wherever they use fog lines, it helps save the road and, you know, every little bit. I would like to see, for example, coming up High Street, that old blur of County Road, and then New Road. I think it would do the same thing for the edges, I'd like to try it for a year.
I'm all for it, I've said that, but along, I think, I think it makes a lot of sense, it's a safety issue, I don't, you know. And you mentioned even federal corners.
Yes.
I think that's another good one.
Federal Corner Road, my estimate is there's over three. Federal Corner Road, my estimate is there's over 3,500 cars every six months over that road.
I guess that's a next year thing at this point, so we're just gonna continue with the striping for this year as same as we have in the past and the next year we. Yeah, forget to get some estimates, so we can put it before the budget.
Yes. Yep. The more detail we have in terms of areas that we're gonna expand, why why we're gonna go from, let's say, 8,000 to $14,000 or whatever it is, whatever the number is for road striping.
Or 260 to 400 on the pavement.
I'm gonna reinforce that. First of all, there's a reason why you've been elected three times. There's a reason why the CIP, the Board of Selectmen, the Budget Committee, Town Meetings said we want to invest more dollars judiciously in our roads. And we've heard me say it to you on camera before. Between ambulance drivers and bus drivers, they talk about they don't have a problem coming to Tuftonville, no matter what. And they go in some strange places, bad places. Now, we have three or four bad hills in town and knock on wood, when was the last time we had an accident on some of these hills? So that's a compliment to you and and it's a compliment to a lot of people, as a matter of fact. Thank you.
Thanks. So I I do have an estimate for Tuftonville and that road, Dame Road, Road Line Road, the Federal Corners Road. And I know somehow we must have discussed those. I don't see, I don't see the one that you just talked about, as far as High Street. I I did have this, this is actually an old quote from, well, this is from November. It was $7,100 to do both the double yellow and the fog lines for those.
So basically, that would take the what we have in there now and pretty close to double it, right? We got eight grand in there now, we got another seven and change here.
And if we wanna add another road like you're saying to.
Well, the other thing is that we're now in June. We don't need to, this is a slam at you, but we don't need to be striking roads in September, October.
Yeah.
Now is when we need these these roads struck.
Yep, I usually wait till after the paving is done.
Yes.
And I suppose we're ready because we're not gonna be strapping around, so we should be ready to alcohol and say we're ready.
Okay. Are we moving into the operating budget, Mr. Chairman?
I'm ready to move on to the operating budget.
Yeah.
So we're. Take a deep breath.
Yep.
And this is nothing personal, you can't control whoever. Any any more than the police chief can control crime or the fire department can control accidents and boat accidents, so.
So the big piece that we have to figure out in my mind is we've used all the winter maintenance money. That's in the budget, but we know we have winter coming at the end of the year. And so where do we come up with money within the budget to set aside to handle calling and treating when the weather gets bad and fall?
Yep, I think our biggest budget we have left to work with is summer, so I think we're gonna have to consider that.
Well, summer, we've already used 92% of it.
That's spring. That's spring. Summer, you get $75,000 left.
Yep.
And if you add spring to it, you got 77,000.
I did some figuring, went back the last five years. I rounded off to the end of the year, October, November, December triad is about 30% of the total winter budget. 30% of 194-4 is $58,200.
Sounds like the same as last year, so I'm gonna do the same thing we did last year. And then even last year, as much money money as we did save, we still came up short. Right. And you got, so 77 plus 27.
Mr. Chairman, that 70,000 sitting in that account, it can be used for things other than road building projects, but the nexus has to be, it's connected to the highway department. Did I read that comment right? Or am I jogging, you have the memory too far back?
I don't think we can, I don't think we'd benefit a line out of our budget with that money. It has to be something off.
That's, you know, a special project.
I'll go get that.
The, what one question that I don't remember the answer to is the FEMA money that supposedly was arriving last month, maybe this come this month from a year ago, 10, 12,000 dollars. If that can be treated as unexpected money, then we may be able to spend that as opposed to just having.
Because it goes into the general fund and it can be used.
Well, it's, we'd have to. Yeah, we'd have to look at the at the RSA.
I'm just looking at all the alternatives.
I mean, it came out of my budget last year, so it seems like it should go back into the budget.
Well, that would be great and that would come, but I I think that this, the special money for the state. I would chip, I think we have a hard time making the case for it.
Well, I can't remember offhand, but I thought I'd ask the question, just due diligence.
Yeah, yeah. So.
So.
So you're saying 30% of the winter budget is spent in the.
Last triad.
Right?
So you came up with 50,000?
58,200.
What do you do with 53,000? Because he's got 103,000 left and has seasonal maintenance lines. If you add spring, summer and fall together, you get 103 grand. If you know you're gonna have 50,000 dollars out at the other end, then he's got 53,000, he can spend this summer and fall doing mowing or whatever others.
Ah, then mowing's a separate line.
Well, it's it's a separate line, but if we may say, you know, as much as important as mowing is, it's not as important as plowing the snow.
Yeah, it's like triage, the the summer items. I'd say these items are, we have to get them done and these items.
You you have, you always have to deal with storms in the summer and in the winter. And and.
Weather events.
Deal with weather events and and we've gotta have the provision there to do that. The the good general maintenance items that are in separate lines on in here like roadside mowing to to try and keep us focused on keeping the roadside's clear are great, but do we not plow the snow because we mow the mow the current roadside? I I think that's.
At least.
That's.
You don't wanna mow if you're not gonna plow, because that way you know where the roadside is.
Yep.
It's not standing up.
Here's some info about those two funds, if you guys want them. The FEMA money and the bridge aid, street and bridge aid.
Well, can I ask a couple of projects that were slated for good weather? Have you made any contact with the vendor as far as mowing?
I've still, I'm still looking at purchasing a mower. So that's.
You personally?
Yeah.
Isn't that a hundred thousand dollar expense?
Uh, I've been looking at used ones for around 20.
Is it the Flail, Siklebar or what?
It's a Flail mower, well, there's two type, I'd actually look at two that I'm considering. One's a Flail, one's a, you know, it's rubbery.
Okay, the next is catch basins, what are your plans there?
Uh, we're on the schedule to be cleaned.
Do you send a guy around who takes a picture or inspects these or?
The, I have a guy, one of my guys goes around with the catch basin cleaner and the examiner.
Correct, right, in case one need to be.
Yeah.
Does it have a proper sump or?
When they, when they clean them, that's when they're inspected, yes.
Okay. The two aprons that we talked about, what are your plans for them?
Well, well, that's why we're here today, to see where we're kind of going today, I guess.
Uh, next is the painting of the truck. When is that going in?
There's been a little bit of an incident that's gonna have to probably come first. The body on the old ten truck no longer side dumps. The framework broke on that. That's critical for us, we need that fixed first. So do we have a cost to repair? I don't at this point, we just, basically, it it happened the last, you know, last school maybe year. We got cleaned out and, you know, trying to get a picture of what actually has to happen and we'll take it from there. I think it's something we can do in the house to save some money. I had my own welder, you know, we've done all the welding in the past on anything else. I don't judge a little welder.
We've spent over $5,000 repairing that truck. It's a white elephant, sir, needs to be replaced. I will not vote for any more money to be spent on that junk. You're in the, you're in the truck business. I will, I will vote, I will vote to use the Volkswagen diesel money to consider replacing it.
I'm not 100% sure what that is, but.
Well, we we put a grant application in last year and had, you remember, we worked on that and and had a grant award available for a smaller amount than what the than what the full grant would have been. I don't remember the the numbers, but we at that point decided that we were not gonna, because for the whole thing to work, the town had to come up with another hundred and some thousand dollars to replace the truck. We decided we're not gonna engage in that last year. Some things have happened with respect to this free money since then. I don't know how it affects, it will affect the grant program this coming year, but I think we got two separate issues here. Whether the truck should be replaced or not is is one question, but I don't believe we're in a position where we can replace it in 2018. So if we, if we say we're not gonna put another dollar into it because we've spent a lot of money fixing it and it's it's an old tired truck, then the question begs the question, so what do we do? Do we rent or lease a truck and if so, where does the money come from to do that?
For contract.
You know, do we, do we just?
Contract somebody else's truck.
Just, you know, contract that that work out. But it's, in 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 the fullness of time, it's great to say this is where we need to be. Some of those things we can't get to now. Just because we don't have the opportunity and authority to get there, so.
Yeah. I'm hoping it's not gonna be a huge expense, obviously, we're gonna find cheapest way to get it done. But I need to know what that number is before we move forward on the other part. Yeah, we need to know that number too, but we also need to, I think we need to bring a number forward that is letting someone else plow that portion of our roads. Well, we're gonna need to sell the truck again in the summertime, so they're gonna have to. Right, that does two, two things. First of all, it gets the thing plowed without spending money on the old truck. But secondly, it establishes a cost, so that when we go to town meeting to an hour ago to replace the truck, we can say this is your option. You can either buy this truck or you can spend this much money having contract plowing done. And I think it would become pretty evident that we're better off buying a truck, but without that, I don't know how we. It's gonna be, you know, I'm assuming it's gonna be an hourly rate for plowing. You're not gonna have a solid number to work with.
Well, the town, the town has a rate for equipment.
But as far as contracting that out, it would be. But you track, you would must have tracked that truck's usage last year, for instance. I guess we could, yeah, we could probably somehow. This is, this is what we need.
I mean, it's, so it's not gonna be a ramped up with a bow, okay? It's, it's, here's how many hours we plowed with it or how many hours it was used during the year and here's, here's what an hourly rate for contracting for that work would be.
Because I don't actually think we can take money and put it into capital equipment without some kind of authority. Even if you grab it out of some mystical source like Volkswagen's diesels or or wherever.
No, that would have to go through town meeting, yes, right, to buy the truck, yes.
Off the top of my head, I'm, I'm guessing on this because I don't know how bad it really is, but I'm guessing we could probably fix that truck for around 2,500, maybe 3,000. So I don't think we're at the, you know, at the end of the world here. It's, it's worth fixing. It's gotta be fixed one way or another, even if you wanna sell it, something needs to be fixed. You got 7,300 dollars left in your equipment maintenance line. That would leave you with 3,500.
We have other equipment.
Right.
We have, we have sanders that are how many years old that have to be repaired and 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 break down every storm. We have knife edges and and snowplows need to be repaired. The money was put in the budget and we knew going in with the free bed to paint that truck body. When is that scheduled to be done?
It's not on the schedule yet. So will you?
I mean.
Give some clarity, Lloyd. You wanna paint it, but you don't wanna fix it?
No, we, I'm talking about the time we are.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was on two trucks.
Yep, yep, the other truck.
That makes more sense now, thank you, I'm sorry.
Hi, sorry, we're just looking for the building inspector.
He should be there somewhere.
Oh, he's he lives over here though, right?
Yes, he does.
Okay, thanks.
So.
So that's in this budget as well?
Yes, which vehicle are we talking about right now? Because I wanna say something on both of them.
Well.
Which vehicle are you talking about right now?
We've been talking about the six wheeler, the old truck. Repair, replace, when we plowed the 10 wheeler. The initial thought, as I remember, was it was replacement for the six wheeler truck, but we found that we could do some repairs to the six wheeler truck and and keep it operational and and the 10 wheeler is great and provides efficiencies that the six wheeler doesn't, but that in maintaining particularly winter maintenance on some of our roads, the 10 wheeler just is not well suited to that because of its size. There are some roads that that the six wheeler is the, is the one that you need to use to. As I remember, you've indicated, you've identified certain roads, particularly that if you go in there with a 10 wheeler to plow, once you get to the end, you're backing all the way down because it's, there's, you can't turn it, right?
Correct.
And that's a deficiency in the road design, but it's what we have.
The nice thing is the two vehicles get your, get your roads open and treated four hours quicker than ever before.
Yeah, no, actually, so.
There's a balancing act.
All trucks, it's nice.
Right, right.
Forget the, forget the paint jobs and the money. All the towns around us have a mixed fleet of vehicles.
And you don't wanna run a 10 wheeler out to do some gravel work on a road edge.
Exactly.
The, the, the strongest sense that I'm getting here is that six wheeler needs to be replaced. And if we could replace it now, that would be good because the maintenance cost is continuing to go up on it. The reliability has some issues that aren't gonna go away. And so we need to be aimed at putting that on the warrant in 2019 as a, as a replacement. And if we can get some grant money to help underwrite it, that's fine, that's great. That'll, that'll save us on local taxes, but. But to look at what we spent this year already on this truck, knowing that we're gonna spend another twenty-five hundred and maybe more beyond that, just to keep it operational, it's not responsible for us to just say, well, we'll just, maybe we'll luck out for another two or three years down the road. That we, at this point, ought to be focused on bringing a project forward next year to replace that truck. Taking it to CIP, going through the whole process, and part of that is, Chip, you're right that, you know, here's the benefit that we're getting from it out here. If we don't have it, here's what we're gonna pay to outside contract work to get that work done. And it helps sell the, sell the project. But it's, um, that truck is, I think, over twenty years old. Is it eighteen?
Yes, about...
Two thousand two?
I thought it was two thousand one.
Two thousand one. It's about seventeen or eighteen years old.
So it's, it's past its, its sell-by date?
Yes.
I think a lot, I mean, an easy way to look at it is it's gonna cost you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace something. And it's gonna last for fifteen years. That means that every year, you're spending ten thousand dollars to have that. So once the truck starts exceeding that ten thousand dollars, after you've paid for it, exceeding the ten thousand dollars in repairs, then it's costing you money. But, I mean, I, I'm just picking those numbers out of the air cause it's easy. But to spend five thousand dollars on a truck which, the replacement of which might cost you twelve thousand dollars a year on, it's not that bad. But if you start spending seven or eight thousand dollars to repair it, you're just going behind all the time.
I, I listened to you, who has extensive background in trucks, your family does. And you, you made a couple of comments. First of all, remember when he told us that the hydraulics, there's a problem, the wing doesn't stay up? I saw it three times this year. Puts the wing up to go around something, boom, it comes down three, three times. That's not a good working piece of equipment. You looked at the seat and you made a comment, this isn't a good environment for a person to work long hours in. I took a look at the battery box, which is thoroughly rotted out. You know, and I'll just make another comment. You had a red truck, six wheeler, right? What year was that?
Uh, two thousand.
And do you remember what you told me while you got rid of it?
I do. I mean, it cost more money. I didn't make a nickel on it. It cost me money to plow. It wasn't worth having.
And you're, you're a smart businessman, and like you've told me, you're pretty good at welding two things. This is no longer the depression. I support him. Whether it's police cruisers for our officers, or whether it's getting rid of a, a vehicle for the code enforcement officer, he has, he has been eloquent about vehicles. He knows his vehicles.
And I'll be honest, I did think that we were gonna get more life out of that truck. But as this year went through, I kinda come to the conclusion that it may be time.
Yeah, it's amazing you don't have more gray hair, sir. And that's a compliment.
Anecdotally, just in, in, in other towns that I, that I'm aware of, as it relates to highway trucks, fifteen years, they're gone. Another town that has more dirt roads than, than we do said they've gone to ten years on their trucks.
Yep.
Just from a, uh, because of, you know, of course they get more beat up on dirt roads. But it's just, they have found at that point that the, uh, the loss of availability because of downtime and, and the repair expense, you know, are... When you need to deal with a weather event, you, you need to be able to get in the vehicle and go. And if it's not available, uh, it's not doing you any good. It's a real handicap. So, uh, it's important for us to keep our fleet so that it can currently address the weather events and, and the needs of, of the town. And it's, it's great to stretch things a little bit here or there, but, uh, I think it's time. So we gotta, gotta get this thing operational and, and and, and head toward a replacement.
Not, not to beat a dead horse, adjust brakes, do clutch work, repair wing, repair clutch, replace, uh, brakes, fix wing, fix starter, fix power steering, antifreeze leak, repair exhaust, repair steering. And I'm only through February.
Yeah, it was constant this year.
Right, and in fairness, during bad weather, when the road has to be open, and now you or your guy or someone is climbing underneath and it's not doing its job, we're paying double. No, it's costing us doubles. And this is not a slam, sir.
No, no.
It's just, it's to support.
It's, it's time.
I wanna make sure you're in a position to be successful.
I appreciate it.
So we have plenty of time. I think we need to do this one a little bit differently. In that we need to notify sort of truck dealers that we're gonna be in the market in March. And let's get some specs together.
I, I did give a number for you, I believe. It was last year that...
Yep, and we, we're looking at the diesel grant.
Yeah.
Yep.
I believe it was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand is what's in that.
Right, I think the point I was trying to make is that we gotta listen to the, uh...
Okay.
Yep. And so we, we can put a request for proposal out. I don't know when we're looking toward next year's acquisition, if maybe we're a little early at this point. But before we get into the budget season, we need to have that RFP out, get the, get proposals back and, and have something to, to move forward with.
I will say too, I got a call from a very agent from Milton. And they, they had a request out to buy the truck. I think they may have already got the funding. But they put the proposal for the truck, and they're actually, they came to our shop to try out our town truck, cause that's where they're leading towards, so...
The ten wheeler?
The ten wheeler, yep. They're gonna, they're gonna probably do the same truck. It sounds like they're, they're a good, a good guy, is how they put it in. They like the truck, so...
The one comment I will make is, I think getting the last ten wheeler was a learning experience. It started after town meeting, and it wasn't finally you put me in touch with the guy? And wasn't it October when it finally got here?
It showed up sooner than that, but we had problems with it right away. We had to go back.
Right. No, that was twenty miles beyond clear. Can I move on to the ten wheeler?
Sure.
Yep. My family has had his trucks done at that place. Is it in Eppen, Epping or Epsom? Epping? The dealer that paints the bodies and the frames?
Oh, yes, it was, uh...
I can't, I cannot recommend him enough.
Yeah.
Okay, however, you don't take it in this weekend and have it by Monday, do we?
No, you're right. You, you need to get on the schedule.
Okay. As much as there were budget issues, in my opinion, that was planned to be done. When we got the truck and the body was given to us, we knew that within a couple of years, we were gonna be doing this. Unless the board says differently, that appointment, in my opinion, needs to be made ASAP.
Do we have a cost on that?
We did, yeah. Off the top of my head, I wanna say it was, was it seventy-five hundred?
So it's a total pin job?
Yes. Well, just on the body.
On the body, yeah.
You're talking about, about the cab?
No, no, no. And that's fine. That's all fine. That's still...
So here, here's what happened.
Well, there's...
I purchased this thing. It was a brand new truck, but, uh, we were a little short on money, so... So the guy threw in a used body.
Correct, yes.
So...
For free.
Yeah.
Nothing's free.
Well...
True, we have to pay them and sell it.
That was, that was what got him the sale.
It was unknowingly in our front. There's nothing that's...
So we got it within the money that we had. But, uh, again, as you say, with the understanding that this is not a brand new body. And, and if we don't do something to it as we get on the road, then we're having a problem with the body. And, uh, a dump truck without a dump body doesn't, doesn't get the job done, right, right? It's just a chassis. So I, I, I agree with you that, uh, we put money in the budget to get that done this year. And we, I, I don't...
I have, I have a, a solution, a possible solution. Again, since we have to fix the six wheeler as an option, if we have to fix that. And I do agree we should do something. But if we try to do the best we can in-house, maybe we can get them both done. Uh, well, you know, again, we have a welder. We can cut out the rust holes. We can weld in the new metal. We won't be able to sandblast it. We'll just probably scrape the rust off the best we can. We've done it before. And, and we can paint it. We have the ability to paint it.
I have seen this company at work. I've seen four or five vehicles that they've done.
I'm sure they do a much better job than I do. I get that.
And, and that's not a slam. They have the equipment. They have the chemistry. They have the state of the art. They have the step ladders. They have the paint. And meanwhile, what your guys are sanding in their truck, guess what? They're not doing other projects that need to be done in the town.
Well, I don't, I don't think we have the money to stay busy all summer as it stands already. We're gonna have to cut out somewhere, so we will have the time. It's up to you guys. I'm just saying, put it out there.
Well, let's get a, let's get a firm price from the company on what it's gonna cost to do. And when they can do it.
Can you get back to us within a week? The appointment date and the cost, then we'll just approve it or not approve it?
Okay, so you wanna, okay, for the ten wheeler?
Ten wheeler.
Okay, but do you wanna look at my solution?
Well, here's, here's my, here's my concern with that, all right? And that is that, um, repairing the rest of that area is, is important. No question, no question that, uh, that there are other ways to get it done. And once you get the repaired metal and they're getting a good protective layer over it, uh, is, is vital to, to helping the longevity going forward. So let's say that we, uh, that, that by doing it in-house, uh, we save half the cost. And, and how long is that, uh, particular solution good for?
I'm gonna be honest with you. I've, I've already been through this with my old truck. We've had to do the same thing on that. And, um, the spots that we fixed lasted, you know, longer than the truck did. Problem is the rest of the body. If that's rusting there, the rest of the body is getting thin too. It will have to be patched again in probably three years. There'll be another spot somewhere else that's gonna come up. So, you know, we're, we're, might as well just put the least amount of money into it and get us through. Is the way I look at it. Eventually, we are gonna have to buy a body for that truck. And that was always the plan. We knew on that when we bought it. I think we put the least amount of money, keep it going, then get five more years out of it. I think that's doing well, because it's gonna get to a point where we're throwing good money after bad, you know, I mean, bad money. It's just, it doesn't make sense, you know? We're gonna be fixing it, fixing it. It's back to the same truck issue again, you know? We keep putting money there. I've learned this from experience, that our truck has the same issues. It's getting thin everywhere.
So what year is the ten wheeler?
That's two thousand seventeen. The, the truck's fine. It's just the body that was used.
We're looking at, and we don't know how old the body is.
Body's new?
No, no, that truck body was, was used.
You got a used body?
Yep.
No, the truck frame and the...
Oh, yeah, yeah, the dump body, let's see.
Dump body, we don't know how old that is.
We don't. Um, I, I would guess it's probably all of ten years old.
So your, your solution is, okay, let's just patch it up in-house, get it done for a couple more years, you know, buy a new body. And if you're thinking of a fifteen-year lifespan, then you certainly... Works.
Yeah, I mean, it's coming back, I can tell you that, you know? Just from experience, it happens. Same thing. It's not the outside of the body that broke. It was the framework that broke on the six wheeler. It's gonna get fatigued there as well.
So what's a dump body cost?
Probably thirty thousand.
Yeah, thirty, thirty-five years of the hydraulics.
Well, it's a combination, sander. It's a sander and a dump body.
I'm talking about what you need.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, that's why it's so expensive.
It's not a regular dump.
No.
It has this, this, it comes up and moves the sand?
Yeah, and, and the, you know, you can dump sand out the back like the normal dump truck. But this has, uh, in the middle of the floor, it picks up and dumps the sand onto the chain. You know, it's got a chain that spins on it and brings it forward and dumps it in front of the back of, you know, the front.
So you're grinding with the wheels?
The rear wheels are driving over the sands. It's a traction, because there are only two that drive.
Again, I reiterate my request that within a week, you have the cost and the tentative date to have the dump body painted commercially.
I can do that.
To get the cost, I'm getting less and less sanguine about spending the money. I mean, if we could buy a body, I mean, we have that authority. It's just buying the, the equipment we don't.
Yep.
So, yeah, bring us back a price, we'll... And your cost?
Yeah, so, so what, what will help us is, um, what the cost of having a vendor do it is, current cost. And what the cost of doing it in-house is, and we'll go through the whole thing. And maybe spot on that, you know, we'll repair it and then see how that lasts.
And get a...
You know, and, and if it lasts long enough and you do another repair, then you get close to the fifteen-year life of the truck, and then you go for the whole...
Get us a price on the body as well.
Yep.
That would be a lot of preparation.
I have a couple of other projects. What's new with Dan Wentworth?
Oh, as far as getting him scheduled?
Yes.
Um, I thought you talked to him about that. You told me you talked to him about...
Karen, has he called in the last four weeks?
I haven't heard him call, so...
Well, he did put a request in. I have talked to him. He wants me to cut the trees out from around the salt shed. There's some trees there. He needs to get, uh, a lift around it. So I do need to, I've talked to him a little bit, I think. Well, I guess it's been almost a week now.
On the tenth of May, he called me on my cellphone, and I explained to him the following. Item one is painting the Quonset hut at the transfer station. And there's a leak at the skylight. Number two is the repair and painting of the highway buildings. And he will submit a written estimate on that also.
We have that written.
Okay, item three is staining the Sodom Road Bridge. He's looked at the structure. He thinks that he would pressure wash it and stain it. He will examine and report any repairs that need to be done. He'll submit a written estimate on that. I shared with him the board a thought when I try and balance priorities with budget restraints. I also asked him to funnel his contact information and other requests to Karen on the front office. That was May tenth.
Okay, I do have his contact information if you, if you need that. I have it, and I have talked to him.
So you're working toward getting the painting work scheduled?
Yes, yep, I have to cut. I mean, he's looked at it and told me that I gotta cut the trees, which we can probably do that next week.
Is it one structure or four structures?
Three structures.
The garage, the, the salt shed, and the...
Sand shed.
And not the, uh, not the fuel building?
Oh, I actually, I don't know if I mentioned that. I didn't think about that, to be honest with you. I was asking.
Well, I'm only two-tracked here. I'll try to contact him. You'll try to contact him. And I know Clay has been, they know him as often as possible.
Oh, I, I can probably get ahold of him today. I don't know, last time I called him, he kept me straight up.
Yeah, he's, he's a guy to get ahold of in general.
Yeah, I never had any trouble, to be honest with you.
Yep. Did we decide on the budget of what is... Did we decide on the budget of what is changing here? Do we need to vote on it, or will it change from line to line? Is it a work in progress?
Yeah, we'll vote on it.
We don't, we don't have to vote on it, we just know that.
We decided on brown road.
No, 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 we're gonna pay, you're talking about in the budget, that out of what's left in your budget, your main, your highway maintenance budget, you gotta save fifty-eight thousand dollars for the fall, I mean, for, for, for the.
Winter.
The, the start of the winter, the end of the year, winter. So, out of what's left of spring maintenance, which is not much, twenty-seven grand in fall maintenance, and and seventy, seventy-four grand in.
A hundred and three cents.
You got a hundred and three thousand dollars, and sixty percent of that has to be there when the snow flies. So, as you said, you're, we're gonna be.
We're gonna cut a little of everything.
Yeah, yeah.
And what do you need for assistance from the Diane or from the selectmen, so we don't have a repeat of last year going over the budget? Going over the bottom line here. What, what do you need for paperwork or assistance or whatever?
A very detailed weather report.
I like that.
Are there a lot more trees to take out?
Uh, we have, the, the work's been done, we have not received the bill yet. So the work's already been done, I think that's been.
Did they also take the trees?
The tree, the wood, I don't think we're allowed to take the wood, we discussed that.
The wood belongs to the property.
Alls I can do is move it off the road a little bit more, that's all I can do, I don't think I can take it.
So you lift it over the.
Yeah, I'll push it over the.
There's no individual who can lift those locks.
Where are these?
Uh, well, well, everywhere we've had a cut, but I think what you're referring to is down on Union Warth Road where we had those dead trees cut. And there's also another large one that was cut on Brown Road, beginning in Brown. And that thing was huge around, I mean, I don't care if you cut that into eighteen-inch long, you're still gonna be picking it up, it's big.
Yep.
You can ask the landowner, but you can't just arbitrarily take it.
Right.
But you can ask the owner if they want it.
Do you want these huge three logs to disappear? It's not a terribly difficult exercise, is it?
No, I can do that, I'm just not sure that we're willing to spend the money, that was a bit of a question, I guess.
Again, that's, you know, the vendor, isn't it amazing that in the entrance to Bay Street, a tree comes down? And the pieces that were manageable, they gave the landowner, and the big pieces, top-notch, had a logging truck and logged them out. They were done by noon time, doesn't seem like brain surgery.
I kinda assume somebody wants that firewood.
Yep.
Be a shanty.
I mean, we're not talking firewood, we're talking stuff that's almost the diameter of this table, right?
Oh, that was just the one nasty tree, but the other stuff was, it's just log length, that's all.
The wood I see at the far end of Union Warth Road, no family is going to pick up and use for firewood. We're not talking something like this, we're talking, correct?
Well, there is some, the base is big, you have the top surgery, that's all, I don't know, I grew up doing firewood, I can affirm that.
It is maple syrup, you bring in all the wood you can get.
Yep.
Need else, Floyd?
No.
Okay, I do have one thing about, are you responsible for docks and bridges?
I don't think it's in my line of.
Okay, who is responsible for cleaning up the gravel from the snow pile on Union Warth?
That would be us.
And who is responsible for picking up the flotsam that's being stacked on the block next to the fireboat? Driftwood.
All the driftwood.
And who's responsible for picking up the cone and picking up the broken pillar? That has been there, I mean.
Yep, no, I, I can do that.
Yep.
We, we just haven't got through yet.
Land pre-land, got graded?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for listening, yep.
Great, thanks.
All right, so we do need to go into non-public, or.
Thank you again, Jim.
Thank you.
Hold on just a second, real quick, before you go into non-public, could you please look in that folder for today? Just let me know if you folks are gonna go to those.
All right, I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Yep, so there are two two meetings in here next week. One is the Carroll County Regional Coordinating Council, June fifth, at Conway Tech Village. And the other one is the Substance Prevention and Continuum of Carroll Work Group meeting, Tuesday, June fifth, in Tamworth. So.
What happens to?
So this, this thing in Conway is from ten to noon.
And this is nine to twelve thirty?
It's nine to twelve thirty, and so I think what you wanna, what, what you need to know is, is if more than one of us were gonna be there, then it would.
Yeah, exactly, and where you don't meet till Monday, of course, I have to post it today, yeah.
Yep.
I went to the, that one.
Did you go to that one?
This is one in Tamworth?
This is the one in Tamworth, that's the one in Conway.
You went to the substance abuse one, the one in the folder, right? I remember you going to that.
Right.
Yep.
Regional coordinating?
That's a whole, yeah, a whole kit and caboodle, everything going on in the county, it seemed like, I was reading through the minutes, including the substance abuse stuff.
Let me look at this, yeah. Neither, neither.
It won't go back.
Yeah, neither of those, I mean, you answered the question with respect to the reimbursement cell, about that.
Okay.
I will go to the one in Conway, the tech one.
Okay.
On the fifth, at nine o'clock.
At ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, yeah.
Yep, all right, well, I, I can go to the one in Tamworth.
Yeah, I'll try to keep them.
At nine o'clock, so I better put it in my calendar or I won't, won't remember it, so.
Okay, so I don't need to post it, I'll just put it that, you can have each of you own, okay, thank you.
So we need to go into non-public to work on a performance evaluation.
I'll make a motion we go into non-public for.
Et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's A.
I'll second, would, yes.
Marcus, yes.
I'll be, yes.
Yeah, it's just two A.
So this is just the one performance review?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
That it?
That's it.